Here we are. Call this Village of Green Hills Council meeting to order for September 26, 2023. Clerk call the rolls.
Ms. Hermes?
Here.
Ms. Water?
Here.
Mr. Holter?
Here.
Mayor Moore?
Here.
Mr. Lee?
Here.
Ms. Hutton?
Here.
Okay, and Ms. Osmone-Gloo has an excused absence. We have a prayer by Maria Walter.
Lord, we ask you to send your Spirit of servanthood upon all of us here gathered this evening to do your work for the benefit of all in our community. We ask you to bless our elected and appointed officials so they may deliberate with wisdom and act with courage. Bless the members of our community who come here to speak before council so they state their cause with honesty and humility. Lord, teach us to be generous in listening so we may understand others' points of view. Lord, we also like to thank you that you allow us to protect and return back safe home our former chief, and please keep an eye on our new chief so he always will go home safe. Lord, we ask you to bless us all that everything that we do here tonight will move you to welcome us one day into your kingdom as good and faithful servants. We ask this in the name of our brother Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have the minutes of previous council meeting of August 22, 23. If there are no corrections, minutes will stand as approved. We have no public hearings, so we have a public presentation though this evening by Jennifer Wykert from the Green Hills Library Branch.
Good evening. Glad to see all of you again. I just wanted to offer a few more of the fun things that will be happening at the Green Hills Branch in the next coming month. We have resumed our visits to area schools, and we're also going to be at a number of community events coming up, including, of course, Fall Fest, Springfield Township Hoot Nanny, and other fun things. So keep an eye out for a library table and come say hi, maybe check out some of our fun swag, especially if you weren't able to come on Saturday for our Customer Appreciation Day where we had a lot of it out there, but we saw a lot of people, so we're very glad that went well. I also wanted to say that October is Anti-Bullying Month, and we are going to have a special program with Quest Martial Arts where they're going to do a self-defense workshop that will present a series of fun activities that teach boundary setting, verbal skills, how to get to safety, and some simple but effective skills. And we do have, registration is recommended but not required, in case you want to have a reminder, and so we have some idea about how many people will be coming. We are also going to have an Oktoberfest celebration by celebrating Cincinnati's German Heritage. The Cincinnati Museum Center is sending a docent, Creative Aging Cincinnati is providing that, and they're going to talk about Cincinnati's German Heritage Monday, October 2, at 6:30. We continue to have a lot of monthly activities that we encourage people to come. We have our chess club on the first Tuesday at 6:30, our nonfiction book club on the first Thursday at 3:00 p.m., we have our fiction book club on the second Tuesday at 6:30 p.m., romance readers on the second Saturday at 11:00 a.m., our mystery book club on the third Monday at 6:30 p.m., and our classic movie club on the third Saturday at 11:00 a.m. We also have our library for all programs, which are for adults with developmental disabilities and their caregivers, Tuesday, specific Tuesday nights in usually about 6 o'clock. It's not like always on the third Tuesday or anything, but keep an eye out for it. We were doing string painting when I left, and we'll be doing pumpkin painting on October 24th at 6:00 p.m. I lied, October 17th, the next one. And then National Chemistry Week, we're going to have a live chemistry demo on October 24th, that Tuesday, at 6:00 p.m. for kids and tweens. And then we also wanted to let you know that we, library offers voter registration services and everything else, so if you need to register or update your address, we can help with that. We can also get absentee ballot requests, check where your polling places, all of that fun stuff. And I just wanted to remind everyone that the deadline to register for the November 7th election is October 10th. Come and see us before then. Thank you. Yes?
I have a quick question. I saw that the downtown library has 3D printing now?
We've had 3D printing at a lot of places for a while. Any, a lot of the Makerspace locations will have it, but if you visit our website, each one has a page that will tell you what's available, and if you want to do it, I recommend making a reservation because they're very popular.
Okay.
Of course.
Good. Thanks. Thank you. Okay, reports of municipal officials, municipal manager Yvonne Kovak.
Thank you, Mayor. And first, I would like to welcome our new chief, now in the hot seat. And I'm sure he's going to do a great job, and once again, we will forever be indebted to our former chief, who did a lot of great things for our community, and we thank you for that. So they're both here tonight. Exciting occasion. Anyway, welcome to you. We had, and new chief was there, we had a really great talk in the park this past week, and thanks to the council members that were present, we had almost all new faces, which was very exciting, and a lot of good conversation and ideas generated, so it was, it was great, and I look forward to the ones next year so we can continue that. I've heard a lot of questions raised about our aggregation programs, and I want to be sure that our citizens understand that there's two parts to your bill. There's a distribution charge and there's a supplier's charge. Our aggregation pertains only to the suppliers. Duke will always be the distribution regardless of who you use for your supplier. So when we started ours, it was a three-month period that we knew our rate would be higher than Duke's, but we also knew after that time period, Dukes would go up and ours, ours would not. And we're in that time period now, and I know a lot of people are wondering, why should they get out of the aggregation program because their, their rates went up? And again, two parts, if distribution went up, it's not going to change. If you got out of our program, you may want to return to our program. I don't think Duke charges for transferring. Does anybody know where it all, has anybody done that? Do check with Duke first, though, if you want to transition back to our program, to be sure they don't charge you a fee to transfer, but our rate is likely to stay lower now for the supplier portion. We can never control the distribution, so just to clarify that. I think people tend to, you know, before I knew something about an aggregation program, it never occurred to me to look at the split on my bill to see how that all worked, but we have a little bit greater understanding now on that, on what we can impact and what we can't. So I think you will still find our rate cheaper at this point.
Is that something we can communicate through the journal?
Yeah, I think it is. Yeah. And really, the questions were just like within the past week, so we'll get something into the journal about that. A similar issue is property tax, because we're hearing and reading a lot about everybody's valuation went up, which apparently reflects the market. But I do want to encourage you to go ahead and check, the auditor has, right on their front page, they have a list of different articles that they, that pertain to this, and in particular, there's one that will generate, if you're interested in seeing, again, when you go to Hamilton County Auditor's site and pull up their first page about the valuations, there's all different kinds of things you can look at. But there's one chart that will compare us to everybody else, and it gives like commercial rates, residential rates, agriculture rates, so a little complex, but it might be helpful for some to take a look at. But most importantly, one of the things they're saying is that just because the value of your property changed a certain percentage does not mean your taxes are going to change with that same percentage. So I would just encourage you, they haven't told us how much yet, but I would just encourage you to tune in, you know, log on to that website, the Hamilton County Auditor's website every now and then, as they get more information, they'll be putting it out there for us to see, and we'll share it with you as well.
Sorry, I keep interjecting.
Yeah, it's okay.
So will they have a second wave of communication talking about what, how it will actually affect?
They will.
Because otherwise, if you have a window of opportunity to question it, you can go down there and say, hey, I don't think this is.
Oh, right, right. If you want to contest it, yeah, that's a whole different process, and that is on the same site.
But I think there's a limited window that you can do that.
There is, yes.
So I'm assuming that there'll be another form of communication coming saying, here's the actual impact, which is going to cost you or not.
No, probably in late December, they'll be putting it online for you, you can go and search your property in December, which would show you what your, your taxes would be forthcoming.
But is that prior to that window?
No.
No.
Well, yes, it's prior to the window. You have, I think, until like March, but don't quote me on that.
January 1 through March 31.
But you, but the residents won't actually have to go to that website and check, right? Or will they get something, you know, go get something in the mail?
They'll get their tax bill early January.
Yeah, for real. I mean, they, by now, should have received a letter of what their new valuation is.
Right, but the evaluation, like you said, evaluation is not the same as the tax.
Right, yeah.
And they can go to the auditor's website now, and they talk a little bit about that specifically, saying, you know, if your tax, if your valuation went up X amount, does not mean your taxes will go up.
Right.
And then they talk about the reduction factor and all that kind of stuff.
Right, I understand that, but I don't think it's the cleanest way to do it.
Yeah.
Because you would say, this is how much it's going to actually impact you. Now you have a window to say whether you agree with that or not, but to mix it up with just talk in the general sense versus, I don't know, actually, I don't think it's...
So once they get their property tax bill, they've got till March 30th to...
And I can see certain residents being unaware and getting that and have sticker shock and think there's stuff with it.
Well, and it's not an easy thing to have your evaluation changed.
I've heard, I've heard some different cases where people have gone down there and they changed it, but I don't think they had been kicking screen.
Well, there's a process, you have to go through, and you have to have appraisals and that kind of thing. But for instance, if you just bought the house and the amount you paid for the house was less than what they have it appraised for, that's easy. But if, if yours went up just like your neighbor's, you're going to have a hard time.
Right, well, it's a hard thing to quantify at this point.
Right.
And again, in this information, they say their purpose is to establish the market value, that the state actually sets the tax rates. So yeah, I don't think you'll see that or until your tax bill comes out. But again, we'll, we'll keep a watch on this to see if anything comes out that'll shed some light on it for us. Okay, a while back, council had asked me to solicit bids for the pool operation, and so I have done that, and those are due back October 18th, so possibly by our next meeting we'll have some additional information. Our service department facility is going through mitigation, continues at this point in time. It's close to being complete. For those who don't know what happened, we had a rather serious water main explosion up there that pretty well soaked the building. It's been, everything that has to be gutted has been gutted and dried, and there's just a couple of additional things before we can start into the restoration portion of it that I suspect will take a few months, so just to let you know that. And let's add on a fun note, which is Harvest Fest coming up on October 7. The overall time for Harvest Fest is 12 to 8, but we have different times when things are going on. We'll have booths and touch a truck from 12 to 4. The balloon comes in around 5, but they'll probably be there around 4 setting it up, so that'll be happening and rides start 5 to 8, music goes 4 to 8, and food and beer goes the whole time period. So should be fun, continuous, different types of entertainment, so we're looking forward to that. Hopefully, it'll be a real pretty day. And that's it for me for now. Thank you.
Question?
Yeah, there's a couple of things that I wanted to bring up. I received a call from the commander, him or Haver, and concerned Veterans Day coming up, 11/11, at 11/11, they're planning on doing the ceremony. The Memorial Day call, one call, had some problems when we made it. Some people didn't get it, some people got it like much later at time, so they couldn't make it on time for the ceremony. So he wanted to make sure that I mentioned that so it would not happen for the Veterans Day. Also, reminder that two years ago, we had the lawn cutting at that time, and I had to rush to tell them to take a break because they were in formation when the machines started going. So I don't know if you have a control or a view.
Yeah, wasn't that Memorial Day?
No, that was on, on Veterans Day.
Oh, okay.
And I had to run to from one to the other to please take a lunch break right now until they're done. Also, for our new chief, this is going to be, I can salute, you may need to let the white building know because they have some students there, and they always appreciate the head call from that rather than trying to wonder who it is. Also, when you put some kind of information from Green Hills and the events happening in here on the journal, perhaps we can also put just a little line for November that we're going to have on the comments, the Veterans Day observation. I had a couple of people mentioned at the park, they talked at the park, and then they also repeated to me that they're confused because they want to take a walk, but they have a signage that prevents them from going to walk on the golf course area, when and if it's allowed, and they wanted to know if there were hours, and if not, why not put the hours that it would be okay for them to walk into that golf course area?
Okay, yeah, right now, it's probably dusk to dawn. I know my taste has signed down a lot, but it gets put back up. But I can tell you right now, they're, they're actually working on the paths again, the gravel's going in on the pathways. So, and we put some cones out to draw people's attention to where it ends, you know, anybody out there right now, you know, kind of bump off a bit.
And then I like the idea, the suggestion of that one lady at the talks at the park, that when there's something going on with the planetarium, like blue moon, this and that, I'm doing, that's a perfect place that has no light pollution from buildings and things like that to observe there. Perhaps in the recreation department, maybe they can take some ideas of that, maybe perhaps have three telescopes or something like that to initiate that, or bring your own telescope if you have it.
And they can check them out from the library.
They can check them out from the library.
Right, there you go.
That's, you know, the, maybe that particular day, have a food truck there, just make it a fun thing. Once in a blue moon, we had it. No pun intended, but maybe your shower, things like that. And that was an excellent idea.
Yeah, I thought so, too.
And then you stop to think about it, there is nothing in there, no, no pollution from lights anywhere. If you need something, maybe a pen light to guide your way, or maybe a solar light to mark the path or something like that, and would be a minor thing to do. And that's it for me. Thank you.
All right, moving on, law director, Jeff Forbes.
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing really to report tonight, no pending legal matters, no new legislation at the state level of municipal concern.
Okay, all right, thank you. Clerk of council, Teresa Lawley.
Nothing tonight.
New chief of police, Jim Howard.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple things going on, I just want to thank manager and everybody for allowing Chief to work with me for a month. It's been excellent transition. I couldn't imagine coming in here October 1st and learning everything from scratch, so everybody's been so welcoming, everybody from the council to residents to things, events that I've attended, and the officers and so forth, so I really appreciate it. I wish Chief nothing but the best in his retirement, a long, healthy retirement. The door is always open, I'm not changing the locks, come back whenever you want. Love to have you. With that being said, had some training going on the last couple of weeks. It's nice to see the great working relationship that we have with surrounding jurisdictions and Forest Park. They had the officers out there for driver's training, went through felony stops, point stop sticks, high-speed stuff, so it's great to see that and that they include us in that. Also, we had recently the in-service training for mental health awareness where Sergeant Holbrook held. It was great scenario-based training, covered policy and procedures on mental health illness and coming into contact with individuals on that, so that was really good and really good to see. Everybody really did very well in the training, I observed a lot of it and was impressed with how the officers handled the scenario-based trainings. Like the manager said, as far as looking forward to Harvest Fest, we'll have the police crews there, kids can go in and out of. Also, we'll have a SWAT vehicle there, the armored vehicle that I actually sit in when I go try to negotiate with barricaded individuals, so be glad to show that off to... As far as the month of October, the activity by the numbers in August, or August, not October, we're not there yet, we had 27 criminal arrests, we had 197 incidents that we responded to, 34 of them were squad runs. We actually issued 44 traffic citations and 85 warnings for traffic violations. Took four crash reports during the month of August. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. Kind of new at this, so...
Welcome aboard.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Continue, if you look forward to the monthly updates, you trained me well, so hopefully I'm working on Octobers already.
All right, good deal.
I look forward to keeping that up because I think it's vital where to get information out.
Okay, mayor's report, I've got bank balance of $26,446.06, checks to be issued to the state of Ohio, $1,760.50, Hamilton County, $67.50, Village of Green Hills, $6,336.90. That's for the month of August. And just one other item to mention on the property tax reevaluation, on the county auditor's website, she does have the tentative values for all communities in Hamilton County, and they break it down by commercial property, agriculture, and residential. And the state still has to do the final approval of the tentative values, but Green Hills value for the, all the real estate in the community is going up 46 point and some percent. Some are higher, some are lower in the county. So that's all I have. Moving on, reports of community committees, community development, Jeff Falder.
Thank you very much. So we met on, community development met on September 12th, and we have got a number of things that were discussed, one of which is beautification awards. If you would like to compete, and we have broken down the sections, everybody's, and in that section is put in a pool that has kept their property well, and then we draw a name out. That's how we arrived at it, so that we didn't have the same awards going to the same people over and over, even though we really appreciate them keeping up their property. So this is a chance to clean up their property, and I'd really recommend too, there are things that don't violate code necessarily, but it's easy to start leaving stuff on your porch, things on the side of the house. I know temporarily, that, you know, is just a necessity, but it really does help if we pick up our property, and I think it just helps the general atmosphere, so recommend that you do that. And glad to hear about the park path, I'm glad to hear that it's rattle for initially. I think that'll be good. I do still have some questions about the sprinklers and stuff, if they, I don't know if they had made their, made around those or not, but I know there was a couple sprinklers there, and we're going to try to maintain that. But what a great opportunity to get that law. Thanks for doing that. Let's see, we did talk about property maintenance and enforcement, and I know that there was talk of property maintenance brochure, so if I'm not mistaken, it's us putting something together, some guidelines that we get passed out to people and post on the website. So we want to do that, and so it's real clear what's expected, and if, you know, somebody's coming new into the village, it'd be good to give them that information. I think we do in the general sense already, though, right?
Yeah, we do.
So rather over-communicate on that since that's such a big topic. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Safety, Melanie Hermes.
Our committee met today. It was myself, councilwoman Maria Walter Willard, Mayor Moore, manager Kovak, plus the two police chiefs. So we've had both Chief Fertleman and Chief Howard, and also the fire chief, Tony Spake. We discussed some old business, only two things that we really wanted to circle back on were the reflective arrows. We had suggested putting some up on Wenton Road, and they have been purchased near Andover in that bend, because it seems to be a target for accidents. So the arrows would be put on the metal cabling, so they have been purchased in the hope is to have them up, installed this fall, they will be installed this fall. And then we kind of circled back on the parking, which had been moved over to Streets and Services just to kind of check in, the limiting parking on a few streets, and the first one will be Falcon, and Streets and Services working on getting that started for residential meeting. Some new business we talked about is someone has heard goats in the D section, and goats are not in our code. They have been heard but not seen, so we are going to determine if and where the goats could be at. So if you have goats, goats are not permitted in Green Hills, so please...
What is it, goats or ghosts?
Goats. Ah, interesting, maybe what they're hearing is ghosts, it's not goats.
Well, you know...
Ghosts of the goats. So yes, please, if you do have goats, please move them.
Free rein in for a chicken.
Yes. Hens are allowed, but no goats.
And no roosters.
And no roosters. We talked with Chief Howard about the transition, so far, so good, and special thanks to Chief Fertleman, so this, the transition seems to be going well, so thank you. Then Chief Spake was talking about there are some fire lanes that are on some constricted streets, mainly Avanale Circle and Dayspring. It's the Avanale and the Circle, so just beware, it is tight and the fire apparatus doesn't, do not have a lot of room, so if there is an emergency, make sure that they're, try and make sure there's room for the vehicles, but that's just something to keep an eye on for now. The fire department is working on the hydrants, so you should see the mountain about, they should be done by the middle of October. There was some discussion on updating the fire station, that there has been a positive relationship with the fire marshal, so that seems to be going well as well. And then we did have a discussion on street signage and speed bumps, street signage for something like kids at play. And what the general knowledge has been is the signs have given a false sense of security for children or for individuals, so they, it's kind of discouraged to have the signs because you don't want a kid or their parents to think that protects them. So, and then also, speed bumps have been proven not to be effective on excessive speeders. So I know there's something, everyone should slow down, everyone should pay attention, just a general reminder, be conscientious when you drive in, anywhere, but especially in residential areas. We do have a lot of children, and it's a great neighborhood for them to be out inside and playing, so please pay special attention to residential areas in general. We had no meetings scheduled at this, no new meetings scheduled at this time, so that was our discussion this evening. Any questions?
Just have a comment, just so be aware that it's getting dark earlier, and that adds a little bit to the confusion and what you're seeing, and what is the shadow, or whatever the case may be.
And we did have a general discussion, it's not this month, but Halloween, the police and fire department will be out, so we're looking forward to that.
I have a lot of comments today, sorry. One thing I was wondering about from a safety standpoint, our water was out when that water... One thing I was wondering about from a safety standpoint, our water was out when that water main broke, and had to go to a friend's house to get the water. Not being total disaster-oriented, but at least aware of it, do we have anything, like if, you know, it doesn't take much to affect our whole community since we're so small, do we have anything for where to go on get potable water? Do we have any kind of built-in thing? I think a little forethought on that might be helpful.
I'm going to look over.
Yeah, I mean, at larger scale, our emergency plan would cover something like that, we'd have information. But even for smaller, yeah, that's a good point, maybe if we put something together on, like daily things like water main breaks and stuff, that might not be a bad idea.
Because I thought, well, should I come up, actually, would I come up here to fill my containers with water thinking? I didn't want someone to think, oh, council member goes to get water, no one else can get water. And so I don't know if there is a place or a designated place to say if there's, you know, if there's an issue with water or whatever that relates to that can, you know, go here, or something like that. So, I think it falls under.
When we had the emergency of lack of electric during the winter, we were able to provide help for people to come in here. And I was thinking that during the time that we have that problem on Ingram and the J sections there, it was a very hot day, that perhaps, now hindsight is 100%, but perhaps we could have had the same opening time here on the council chambers for air conditioning, plugging the phones, just to get the phones working and so forth.
Yeah, no, the whole charger piece is.
Correct.
And we had talked about that as well, having up here for summer, not just winter emergencies.
And I would think it'd be helpful to have it tiered, like if it's minor, one water main break affecting two streets that it caused, if there's major, appears planting or seed.
Yeah.
And with the power, it was like, is it for extended periods or just a day? Probably not, but if it's.
Well, it depends on the amount of people, I mean, you can't.
Exactly, yeah.
Well, in this particular one, kept adding on four hours at a time, and it was a very, very hot day.
Sure.
Okay. Great, Recreation Cable Television, Rachel Hudson.
Thank you, Mayor. We met on Thursday, September 12th as well. We still are talking about the pickleball, if it'll ever be finished, and also talking about just the funds that are available and working with Avon to see what's realistic for us to do, and maybe getting some goals as far as what we would like to see done, what's available. And then for Waycross Media, they have that the live election forums are next week, and that'll be on October 3rd and 4th, and it will include the Witten Woods Board of Education candidates as well.
Service in Streets, Jack, do you have anything?
Yes, I do. Jennifer sent along her regrets, but also sent along a substantial agenda rundown, so bear with me. We had a meeting on August 29th. The village manager, Mayor Moore, myself, the code enforcement officer, John Vaughn, was there, Deb Heimer, finance director, and Jennifer, and then Bev Ventura was there as a citizen observer. The old business subjects that were talked about were trash sidewalk repairs. The sidewalk shaving has been completed. There are some blocks that need to be replaced, and so that was discussed. Wanted to kind of address the concerns about code violations and whether they actually occur. This was a ledger of all the code enforcement things that have come up this year. And it's street by street, obviously shows those continuing items. I'd say that better than, I'm just venture a percentage, 95% to 98% are taken care of with the first notice. And that's typically with the doorknob hanger that they put on the front porch. It's like, hey, your grass is getting too high, and it's taken care of. So the majority of those kind of things are noticed, people are notified, and it does get taken care of. There is a process that occurs with notification and so on and so forth before it gets to the point where we will get to with an ordinance read or resolution read this evening. So, you know, that does happen, as well as talking about tree maintenance. Some of the new business items that was talked about, the parking issues on Falcon, the village manager has kind of costed out a proposed parking lot in that area, but we've got to come up with the funding for that. Street sweeping, broken down cars, the park with the pathways, you know, was discussed there as well. And, you know, just a lot of different issues. That was about a two-hour meeting on the 29th. So a lot of good stuff. If you want to get into the weeds on that, you can get with me. But that's the end of that report.
And since I'm making a lot of comments, I'm going to add to that. You know, one thing, it's, I think it's important, when we bring up, hey, what's going on with code? When we see flat tires, we see another one out there now, and we see certain things. It's not to take away from all the work that's being done. I think it is a huge battle, and there is a process. I'm grateful we followed the process. I think it's a very generous process that you could give someone a notification, and they have, we have to wait three or four weeks before we cut their grass, and it's already tall. So I don't, I don't think any of us mean any disrespect that something isn't being done. We don't see that report, I haven't seen that report, that helps. But I think it's more for driving around and know what we're up against. I think it is one of our biggest issues in this community, where, yes, we fix those. We fix them at the shopping center and then turn around two weeks, one month later, and we're having to report them again. I think we did put some legislation in place at one point that said, if this is your second and third offense, something's going to change, or it's got to change. So not to take away from the hard work that's being done and the battle that's being fought, but I still think that we all should be trying to up our game when it's not always inherent to the resident to say, hey, I just want to care for my property because it's the right thing to do. So not to take away from that at all, but I think we should still press on until we get compliance.
It is happening.
Good.
Okay, and our governmental affairs, laws and rules.
Can I ask, the sidewalks, the repairs are going to be done next year, I'm guessing, for the ones that do have to be replaced?
Okay, all the precision cutting has been completed. There are some, the whole blocks, and they should be done this year.
Oh, this year?
Yeah.
How about, do you think it's going to be before Halloween or after Halloween?
Oh, my gosh, possibly after Halloween.
I put lights out on ones that I know are problematic near me, so I put little flashing lights that gets concealed.
The floating one by your house?
The floating one by my house, that has either sewer, tree roots, everything involved. It's a three, it's three blocks that teeter totter. It's actually kind of fun, but also could be a hazard for.
You know, we'll check to find out when he's going to get there to do it, but it's supposed to be done this year.
Okay, thank you.
Laws and Rules, Maria Walter.
I was together with the meeting on safety, but we didn't have anything on the agenda for laws and rules, and there will be some coming for the next months or so.
Okay. Finance and Audit, Jack Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counsel, at your place tonight is the general fund recap for the month of August. You'll see that things are continuing in 2023, moving along rather nicely. There is one outlier on the report in the general fund revenues for the month of August 2023. Looks a little shy, but that was because the August real estate tax hadn't come in from the county. It was delayed about a month, and it did come in. So you'll see that outlier corrected in next months. General fund balance as of the end of August was $2,013,297.04. Expenses, you know, expenses are up as far as on a monthly basis. We are, however, enjoying a low year on the amount of transfers, so we're still actually expending less than we did last year at this time. The amount of appropriations stands at 54% for the year at this point. There were no transfers in the past month. So unless you have any questions, that's the end of my financial report.
Mr. Lee?
Yeah.
Do you have a price yet for salt for this winter?
There's a resolution tonight.
Okay.
From your packet.
Okay, but it said higher than the last? Yes. How much higher? About $20 a ton. Okay.
Okay, moving on, this opportunity for residents and non-residents to make comments solely regarding legislation that's on the current agenda. I see no non-residents here, so this is the time for citizens to comment on legislation listed on the agenda for this session. Counsel, when recognized, please come forward to the podium, complete the sign-in sheet verbally. Indicate if you're a resident of Green Hills, comments will be limited to four minutes.
Monique Masonhalter, Green Hills resident. I just have a quick question about the road deicing salt. I don't know if any of you have heard reports about some Ohio communities using fracking waste to deice roads. I've read some horrifying articles about this. One in particular that I remember was published a few years ago in Rolling Stone magazine, and there were several Ohio residents who were interviewed, and some of them represented Ohio environmental groups. And they reported that after fracking waste was used to deice roads, that they were getting sick. There were children getting sick, pets were getting sick, and there were deformities, illnesses, and deaths with livestock. So I just wanted to make sure that, if you all know, if this salt that we are purchasing to deice our roads is actual salt and not fracking waste.
It's salt.
Salt, salt.
I did, I'm trying to say something. I knew I brought this up last year, and I did call, and we did look on the website to double-check last year that it was salt. I'm aware of what you were bringing up. It wasn't in our situation, and if we're with the same vendor, then we should be good to go.
I just wanted to make sure.
The bid itself would specify what it is.
Yeah, I think, you know, people call it deicing materials, you know, might be called salt when it's really fracking waste.
I don't think it works to bring it up and ask some questions, are very valid questions, so thank you.
Okay, there's no unfinished business. New business, Resolution Number 2023-R15-F, accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution 2023-R15-F, Resolution Accepting the Amounts and Rates as Determined by the Budget Commission and Authorizing the Necessary Tax Levies and Certifying Them to the County Auditor. Whereas the Village of Green Hills, Ohio, in accordance with the provisions of law, has previously adopted a tax budget for the next succeeding fiscal year commencing January 2024. Whereas the Budget Commission of Hamilton County, Ohio, has certified its action thereon to this council, together with the estimate by the county auditor of the rate of each tax necessary to be levied by this council, and what part thereof is without and what part within the 10 mil tax limitations. Now therefore be resolved by the council of Village Green Hills, Ohio. Village of Green Hills, Ohio, Section 1, that the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission in this certification be and the same are hereby accepted. Section 2, that there be and is hereby levied on the tax duplicate of said village the rate of each tax necessary to be levied within and without the 10 mil limitations as contained in Exhibit A attached hereto and made part of this resolution. Section 3, that this resolution shall be in full force and take effect from and after its passage. Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of this resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 2023-R15-F. Any comments or questions?
Just if I could bring a little clarification, if counsel, if you took the time to go through these these individual tax accounts, you'd see that really the new valuation, as was discussed earlier, is only going to affect the inside millage, which is our portion of the 10 mil guaranteed or permanent. And the village actually gets three mills, approximately three mills of that 10 mil permanent. The other goes, part of goes to the school, and the rest of it goes to the county. The bond fund, which is nearly paid off and will be, is that next year? That bond is, will go away. Currently, the fire equipment, currently the police, currently the volunteer fire, streets and recreation, none of those things will be affected by the increase in property values. Reason being is that those are called outside millage, and when they're passed, it's for a specific dollar amount. So although the millage changes on it, typically goes down, those do not increase anyone's tax, property tax form. That's pretty much the same, same thing goes with the, goes for the schools on their taxes. Many of the other things that are also on your taxes, zoo, mental health, children's services, blah, blah, blah. All those things do have an inflationary aspect. aspect to that, but those in our portfolio, so to speak, do not. So I-
Would be interesting to see a pie chart on that and then compare that to surrounding communities. You know, what slice we're-
Well, I mean, that's gonna be kind of hard to do. I mean, because, I mean, if you take the property values of, say, Glendale versus us on the same, that's gonna be kind of, kind of a hard-
I guess I was looking at the piece of how much is going to the county, how much is going to school, you know, because oftentimes people say, well, you know-
Nope.
There's a thought that it all comes to us.
Don't they have that on our property tax bill when it comes, if you get your property tax bill?
Yeah, it would be nice to see comparable to other communities. It can be put in a ratio so that you can understand that you're not comparing apples and oranges. I just, one thing is, I know that we hear often, you know, hey, our taxes are through the roof and high-stiver, whatever. But I think if you look in the relationship of how many people contribute to our pie versus other places, there's still a lot of bang for the buck on what we deliver in services and things like that.
Well, I mean, there's, probably the biggest factor that affects that is the higher, much higher percentage of residential property in our community versus, versus, say-
Blue ash.
Blue ash or something, where they have, you know, large commercial, commercial properties. That really helps lower the cost, but then you might have a big warehouse in your backyard too. So, you know, it's-
Well, I think it's a tremendous privilege to have our fire department, our own police department, and the whole idea of not waiting for another community to show up. So it's all in that spirit of trying to communicate what value is-
Well, I mean, to your earlier point, I think, I mean, property taxes will go up. They're not going to go up 40%. You know, but there will be an increase. What that is is yet to be determined.
Yeah, that real challenge, as we all know, is like, I was just at the store, and a juice that we normally buy went up for, like, by $2. So you do that across everything. Everybody's feeling that pain. So, thank you.
Sure.
All right. Clerk, pull the counsel.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Hudson?
Aye.
Ms. Walter?
Aye.
Mr. Holter?
Aye.
Ms. Hermes?
Aye.
Resolution Number 2023-R15-F passes. Next resolution, 2023-R16-SNS, authorizing the municipal manager to purchase road deicing salt from Morton Salt, Inc. Do that?
Okay.
Thank you. Resolution Number 2023-R16-SNS, authorizing the municipal manager to purchase road deicing salt from Morton Salt, Inc. Whereas it is necessary that the village have road salt on hand for the treatment of village streets during inclement weather, and whereas the Village of Green Hills has participated in the Hamilton County Cooperative Bid Process for the purchase of road salt, and whereas as a result of said bid process, the village has determined that Morton Salt, Inc. is the lowest and best bidder at a price of $82.10 per ton. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the Village of Green Hills, Ohio, Section 1, that the municipal manager is hereby authorized to accept the bid proposal from Morton Salt, Inc. for the purchase of road salt pursuant to the bid specifications incorporated herein by reference. Section 2, that the finance director is further authorized to pay Morton Salt, Inc. a price of $82.10 per ton of road salt pursuant to contract. Section 3, that this resolution shall take effect and be in force from and after the earliest period allowed by law. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions?
I'm still asking, finding, missing a piece that I wanted to ask. I know that it's $20 more. I know that we're purchasing, but how much reflects the increase, let's say, in thousands of dollars on the total purchase?
Depends on how much snow we get.
How much?
How much we have to-
How much you have to use.
Okay, we don't know yet how much we need to, okay. We don't have that final number.
We won't know until the season's over how much-
Okay.
Are we currently full?
Yes. And in fact, we didn't have to enter into contract last year because we had so much left over from the previous year.
Okay.
So that's a good thing. But yeah, we have no way of knowing.
We don't know yet.
I think we usually, in the contract, commit like 600 tons for the season, but-
Sometimes use, use less, sometimes use more. Okay. Clerk, pull the counsel.
Ms. Hudson?
Aye.
Ms. Walter?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Hermes?
Aye.
Mr. Holter?
Aye.
Okay. Resolution Number 2023-R16-SNS passes. Next resolution, Number 2023-R17-SNS, Resolution Authorizing the Assessment on Certain Properties in the Village of Green Hills. You're doing that. Okay. Mr. Lee?
Resolution 2023-R17-SNS, Resolution Authorizing Assessments on Certain Properties in the Village of Green Hills. Whereas the village has given proper notice to the owners of certain real property in the Village of Green Hills regarding the removal of vegetation, refuge, garbage, and/or debris from the properties listed below. And whereas the owners of said properties did not take action to remedy the violations, and therefore, the Village of Green Hills contracted to remove vegetation, refuge, garbage, and/or debris, and now seeks to collect said expenses by authorizing the placement of a lien upon the lands and collected as other taxes. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the Village of Green Hills, Ohio, Section 1, that the village council hereby certifies that the cost of such labor, together with the expenses relative thereto, be filed on the return and statement to Hamilton County Commissioners as an assessment against the properties listed and placed as a lien against the properties by the auditor of Hamilton County, Ohio, as follows. Parcel Number 597-0030-0034-00. Address, 29 Farragut Road. Owner, 11 Reynolds, LLC. Cost, $198.31. Parcel Number 597-0060-00848-00. Address, 55 Damon Road. Owner, Jack and Andrea Doty. Cost, $206.65. The total being $404.96. Also, Section 2, all amounts collected as a result of this resolution shall be placed in the general fund of the Village of Green Hills. Section 3, that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon its passage. Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of this resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments?
I just have a question. Do we have reoccurring addresses and owners that this happens and happening to?
Sometimes. The first one listed there is garbage, and we have had some issues with evictions and garbage going out at strange times with that particular company, but not at that location. And then the other one, that's not a recurring one.
Just a quick question. Are we able to ramp up a fee if it's reoccurring, or is there a legal issue in that?
I think generally, the way, the way these work and the way the ordinance is written is that we can add on an administrative fee for this, but I don't think that you can increase that administrative fee for, I'm gonna call it, repeat offenders.
I guess I wasn't thinking, I wouldn't want to do it on the administrative side. I'm just thinking on the fine side that-
Well, we don't-
We don't find them.
Not fine, but I'm just asking. Well, let me get the question out. And I'll lay my cards on the table. So we can hire somebody to go cut somebody's grass, correct?
Correct.
I know that that's varying prices, so we could hire somebody that's more expensive to go cut the grass. I know that seems tricky, but this whole idea of reoccurring people doing the same thing wrong doesn't seem, I just wondered, is there any legal and ethical way to make it tougher and tougher for reoccurring offenses?
One option, and I don't think that we generally do this, I glanced at that ledger, you know, before the meeting, and saw how most of them are dealt with. I'm not sure if any of them get to the last column, which is, I think the last column is cited to mayor's court. And I can't think of any instances where we've done that.
Actually, we have one in right now.
Okay.
Yeah, you're right. It doesn't-
It's rare. The only, so the first, my first thought was, when we cite people to mayor's court, it's under our codified ordinances, and it probably says a violation of this is a, I suspect it's a minor, but I'd have to look at it. And it's not uncommon that in something like that, it would say, second offense within a certain period of time can be an elevated misdemeanor. You could increase the level of misdemeanor for repeat offenses. So that's, that's one thought, but-
And then the reason it doesn't get cited, though, is we actually cut their grass and then charge that, right? So there wouldn't be anything to cite in that case.
Correct. We could choose to cite them as well.
Okay. I'm just trying to think of how do we deal with reoccurring instances that are a burden on everybody, including the community, and just say, this is not acceptable?
And, you know, we do have the chronic nuisance property, but, you know, in reading that, it looks like we almost would have to, some of these go to, like, repeated citations that have to occur within a certain period of time, would be the quickest way, but it's like, a lot of times, like 12 times. So I don't know if we can look at that and make it any tighter.
Yeah, we can certainly look at it and see what other options there are, but from a, just from the purely sort of administrative way that we do typically do these assessments that we then tack on to the property tax, I'm not sure there's a way to increase the level, so to speak, on that. I suppose you could say, if, if we have to assess your taxes once, that's what we do, and if it happens again, maybe we are more aggressive citing people to mayor's court. I will say, even if you cite them to mayor's court, typically what you get as a result of mayor's court is an order from the mayor's court that says, you're guilty, pay this fine, and now go cut the grass, or whatever it is.
Full circle.
And they still don't do it, and then we still end up hiring somebody to do it, and we assess it. So, but we can certainly look at it and see.
The only thing I would say is, if we are able to do anything, I would like, I would prefer that it's mechanical in nature and not like, hey, you're citing me, you're picking on me, you know, having a subjective part of it, you know, if we could keep it, it's just real matter of fact. You don't do it, you know, you do it the second time, you do it a third time, this is just the result. Your choice. It's a burden on the community, and we want something different.
Yeah, and I, I have to say that one of the other reasons why we take action rather than citing, although we could do both, is because we don't want whatever it is all weekend long sitting out, or the grass getting too long, and, you know, just want to keep it looking nicer.
Mr. Forbes, placing the lien on the property, if they would like to sell the property, the title would not be clean because it has a lien on it. So ultimate, that has to be resolved for them eventually if they're going to sell the property. Is that correct?
Yeah.
So actually, they have a maximum penalty there on that sense.
Right. The only thing is, that is someone exiting the community, and by then, I'll just deal with whatever I gotta do to get out of here. That is not helping us on-
Yeah, I understand.
All right. Clerk, pull the, pull the counsel. What were we doing?
For voting on the resolution.
Ms. Walter?
Aye.
Ms. Hudson?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Holter?
Aye.
Ms. Hermes?
Aye.
Okay. Resolution Number 2023-17-SNS passes. Okay. Counsel people have any comments to add to any of our discussion we've had tonight?
I used three months' worth.
Okay. You used up your chips. Municipal calendar?
Harvest Fest, October 7.
12 to 8 p.m.
12 to 8.
And currently, the weather looks high of 80, low of 55, with a 5 to 10 mile per hour wind.
Okay, we're gonna hold.
Oh, I meant to add that we could use volunteers. So if anybody wants a volunteer, they can contact the municipal manager.
That's fine.
Okay.
Okay, good.
Also, for volunteers, you can tap on the school because they need so many hours volunteering for credit, for a certain degrees, diploma, et cetera.
Yeah.
That might be a good tap there.
I can call there tomorrow.
Okay.
And we've had a couple of our churches volunteer also.
Oh, okay.
People, so that's race. They've signed up for this year or previous years?
This year.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Opportunity for residents and non-residents to appear before council. Non-residents must obtain prior permission, and we don't have any. This is the time for citizens to comment on matters before council. When recognized, please come forward to the podium, complete the sign-in sheet verbally indicate if you're a resident of Green Hills or a non-resident, and state your comments. If you have questions, the questions will be recorded and referred to the manager's office for response. This will allow time for thorough and thoughtful consideration to be given to each question. Council meetings are recorded for ease of transcriptions. Comments are limited to four minutes. Speakers may not yield to any or all their time to other speakers.
I'll just let y'all get a copy before I start.
Were you able to use the library's printing service?
Yes.
Good.
I know. It's wonderful. Monique Mason-Halter, Green Hills resident. At the July meeting, I gave all of you copies of three articles about the U.S. Conference of Mayors, National League of Cities, and National League of Counties' opposition to H.R. 3557, the American Broadband Deployment Act. H.R. 3557 preamps municipal authority on the placement of wireless antennas, which could affect the village's income, historical status, property values, safety and security. At the August meeting, I asked if all of you had read these articles and contacted our federal representative, Warren Davidson, and the Hamilton County Commissioners about H.R. 3557. It was unclear to me if any of you had. After I finished speaking, I am asking that all of you briefly mention what you have done about this bill, if anything. It is in all of your best interest to act on behalf of our village by contacting Congressman Davidson to ask that he oppose H.R. 3557, if for no other reason that could, it could significantly affect the village's finances. There are other bills that are also being considered, which also preempt municipal authority on the placement of wireless antennas. I've provided you now with handouts, and I'll read excerpts from them on some of these bills, though all of these bills are worthy of your immediate attention. H.R. 4141 exempts most wireless deployments, cell towers, and antennas from NEPA and NHPA, as it contains identical exemptions in H.R. 3557. H.R. 4510 and H.R. 1123 exclude 5G from a study of mobile network security. It allows the FCC to ignore certain input from other government agencies- It allows the FCC to ignore certain input from other government agencies such as the Department of Defense. It allows industry payments to government regulators. H.R. 3280 allows communications equipment to be replaced under the Secure and Trusted Communication Networks Act, AKA RIP and REPLACE, to be expanded while avoiding review under the NEPA and NHPA Acts. H.R. 4006 preempts local zoning authority for amateur radio antennas with similar provisions as H.R. 3557. These pending bills are being promoted under the banners of, quote, "streamlining," quote, "removing barriers to entry," quote, and quote, "closing the digital divide." When they actually ignore constitutional protections and they conflict with existing federal law, they remove states' rights and would perpetuate the digital divide. In addition to asking you to take action against these bills, I'm asking again that you strengthen the Green Hills Small Cell Facilities Ordinance. Other Ohio municipalities have passed more protective ordinances. Our ordinance-
Would you identify one?
I'm sorry, I'm not finished speaking. I just wanna make sure I get my four minutes. Our ordinance does not fully protect us from the irresponsible placement of wireless facilities for 5G and installation of unneeded infrastructure. Okay.
The other municipalities that you're referring to?
In regard to, I'm sorry, what was your question?
Other municipalities that you're referring to as for strengthening our small-
Yes, there are other local municipalities that have stronger- Anderson Township, Amberly Village, Marymont.
We copied Amberly Village's word for word.
Our ordinance is not as strong.
It's not verbatim.
Not verbatim, no.
I mean, you're right, that was our framework for it, but it, we didn't cover the entirety of it, whether we wanna do that or not.
It is not as strong. And I would be happy to sit down and have a meeting with any of you, and I have offered this before, and we have another gentleman from our community who is willing to do the same, and we have other residents willing to sit down with you also. So I'm offering that again, to sit down and have a meeting about that. In the meantime, we have these federal bills. So any comments on the federal bills?
The federal bill mirrors what's already in place under Highway Revise Code 4939. It's already the law in Ohio and has been since 2018.
Well, other communities have been able to work around that. So these other Ohio, these other ordinances that Ohio-
Ohio law is Ohio law.
So the ordinance that you set up here in Green Hills will not matter if these federal bills go through. So I'm asking if you have read this information and if you have contacted Warren Davidson and also the Hamilton County Commissioners and anyone else about these bills to express opposition or concern regarding these bills.
Okay, wait. We'll let her sit down.
So you guys are gonna answer?
That's it.
I have a question, Jeff. What is your understanding of these bills?
Of the federal bill? I don't have it in front of me, but I prepared a brief memo. I don't know if that was ever, if I shared it with-
Yeah, it was a while ago.
Yeah, you weren't able to make it to the meeting if someone used, sent it in, is that right? Were we talking about the same thing or no?
I don't recall. I do, and I'm happy to look at it more. I mean, typically, I don't undertake that kind of stuff unless I'm directed by the manager or council to do it. And if anybody does, I'm happy to do it, and I can pull out whatever it was that I have prepared originally. I just don't happen to, I don't think I have, it might be on my iPad or somewhere, but I do know that there were some of the, my recollection is that some of the provisions were very similar to things that were already regulated under the Ohio State law. So whether it went into effect or not, some of the provisions wouldn't make any difference because that's already the law in Ohio. I didn't obviously do an exhaustive review, which happy to do if directed to do it.
Thank you.
Okay, nothing else, meeting adjourned.